Okay, ladies and gentlemen, if I can get your attention, please. Before we start our meeting, it's a little different tonight. We're doing what we call a hybrid meeting where we have some of our council that are actually with us via Zoom and we have some here in the room with us. So I'm going to ask Brandon Douglas, our city manager, to explain a little bit about this and what we will do going forward tonight.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and for the people virtually and for the people in the room, we do have a group here. For those of you who aren't watching, as the mayor said, we're still under a Georgia state public health emergency pursuant to the governor's most recent executive order. We are taking precautions to try to prohibit large gatherings, 50 or less, in a single location. As such, we do have the ability for someone to Zoom in to participate in tonight's meeting as well as to participate in person, and we do have audio/video available in our lobby for any crowds that may be overflowed. For tonight's meeting, we have several presentations after preliminary business. Those persons will be leaving. It will allow anybody from the public who may want to attend. We do have some available seating thereafter. This is a hybrid meeting in compliance with the Openslaw transparency, and we do have an executive session on the agenda at the end of the meeting. We will do that as we've done others with Zoom, whereupon the persons, the council members, will mute themselves and turn their screens off. They will teleconference into this meeting. Persons will leave the chambers, will hold the executive session, and then once it's over, will resume the Zoom meeting and allow for persons to come back again. So with that...
Thank you, sir. Councilman Faust, do you recognize that we have a forum present?
Yes, Mayor, Lucy, we have a forum.
A forum being present, I now declare this meeting open. And I'm going to ask Lonnie Waters, if he will, to do an invocation for us tonight. Lonnie, please.
Lord, just let us give you thanks. We're always asking for favors and privileges, but thank you for our help. Thank you for the weather. Thank you for all the city employees it ever brings. And, Lord, we just want to thank you for all the blessings and praises that you give us every day. These favors and blessings, we ask in your name. Amen.
Amen. And we have with us Chief Steve Roper. And Chief Roper, will you lead us in our pledge of allegiance?
Good Lord, we live in the light of the United States of America and in the republic in which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Council, we have our agenda in front of us. At this point, I would entertain a motion that we adopt the agenda as presented.
Subway.
I have a motion that we adopt the agenda as presented. Do I hear a second?
Second.
And we have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye and raise your hands for those of you who are on the Zoom.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Councilman, you have also in front of you the minutes of our June the 1st, 2020 regular council meeting and our June the 15th, 2020 work session, which was a special call meeting. So at this point, I would entertain a motion that we adopt both of those as presented.
Motion to approve both as presented.
Have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, we have a special presentation tonight, and for the purposes of this, I'm going to remove my mask because I don't think I can quite say this with it on until such time as I get done, and then I'll put it back on. So what we have is a proclamation by the mayor of Jasper, Georgia, proclaiming Amateur Radio Week 2020, whereas licensed amateur radio operators throughout our nation demonstrate their value to the public by providing emergency communications during hurricane floods, earthquakes, tornadoes, fires, and other catastrophes, whereas the amateur radio community partners with agencies such as the American Red Cross, the National Weather Service, the Department of Homeland Security, the Salvation Army, and others, whereas amateur radio operators provide needed communication capabilities through the amateur radio emergency services, radio amateur civil emergency service, and military auxiliary radio systems, whereas radio, excuse me, amateur radio operators from the Jasper, Georgia chapter of the Friends of Amateur Radio Group, FARG, gathered in Jasper to demonstrate their emergency communication preparedness during the annual American Radio Relay League field day exercise on June the 27th and 28th. Now, therefore, we, the mayor and city council of the city of Jasper, Georgia, do proclaim the week of June the 21st through June 27th, 2020, as Amateur Radio Week in Jasper, Georgia, and encourage all citizens to recognize amateur radio operators for their many contributions to the continued safety of our residents. And ladies and gentlemen, we have with us Mr. Dennis Stages to accept this from our council. So, Mr. Stages, if you would, sir. I thank you so much for your time, and I thank you for your service. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Under item D, recognition of Jane Zachalan assisting with the Highway 100 incident. I'd like to call forward Steve Roper, our fire chief.
Thank you, sir.
And in recognition of those firefighters, I'm going to ask our council member Kirk Bradhill, if people will bring this to us.
Good evening, mayor, council. We can give Jane Zachalan, more commonly known as H. If we can get her people this minute to get in here, I'll give her that.
All right, we have plenty of time.
Council.
None of them are listening.
Good. I would like to take this opportunity at this time to publicly recognize H. Zachary Waters for their efforts on May 19th at 8:52 in the morning when the young lady was hit head-on by a tractor trailer on Highway 108. They were headed to a job site and drove up on the accident while dust and car parts were still flying. H. and his crew, without hesitation, jumped out of the truck, wrapped their eye bars, and went down into the creek to try and get this young lady out of the car. They got the door open on the vehicle, which gave paramedics instant access to her when they arrived. Unfortunately, her injuries were too severe, and she did not survive, but the instant action by H. and his crew is what needs to be recognized. No hesitation, no phone calls, no pictures, they went to work. They grabbed the tool off the truck, did what had to be done, and I would like to publicly recognize these boys for that. Very good.
Why don't y'all come on up to the front, H.? Can y'all come on up to the front for a moment?
You'll make the speech, H.
So, in recognition of all of this, we truly have to say thank you. There is no way to prepare what life throws at you on a moment's notice, and moments like that really make it or break it for those individuals of our community. So it speaks high volume of your character and your dedication to all of humanity and all of those in your community for what you've done. So thank you very, very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Where we go to front here?
Front, sir.
Don't get in her lap, bud. Try not to pull tall here.
Chief, everything perfect? So, ladies and gentlemen, council members that are on Zoom, I hope you can hear me. On June 13th, 2020, at 5:08 in the morning, while our community was fast asleep, Shift B. of the Jasper Fire Department was dispatched to a residential fire. I'd like to call your attention to the definition of bravery, the state of habit or showing mental or moral strength to face danger, fear, or difficulty, the quality or state of being brave, and, funny enough, courage showing bravery under fire. Lieutenant Zack Petty, firefighter Jordan Burton, firefighter Josh McMillan, firefighter Wesley Robertson consist of Shift B. Engines rolled, lights flashed, and sirens broke the dead of night. Upon arrival, crews found heavy flames and live power lines. They were surrounded by many unknown factors, and yet they were committed to do their job. They were met with extreme heat, danger, and floors literally collapsing around them in a home. Nevertheless, they stood tall, under pressure, they performed well, and had many difficult circumstances. Certain parts of this instance deserve attention. Lieutenant Zack Petty ensured that his crew made it out before himself when conditions deteriorated quickly before then, risking his safety for others and showing true leadership for his crew. Firefighter Burton was injured in the line of duty, sustaining minor burns during the initial suppression of the fire. He has since been cleared back to work and, of course, without hesitation, returned happily. They both exemplified what it means to be brave and to be a firefighter. These actions are a testament to their training, their character, dedication, and passion to perform their duties. To our firefighters, this was just another shift. To us, this is not. They did not ask for special recognition. They never would. This is a moment for our community as a shining reminder that we have local heroes serving day and night. Let us never forget their dedication and their bravery. This elected body, our city manager, Brandon Douglas, and the entire community, thank you for your service and your dedication. We sleep at night knowing that engines roll and heroes respond. Thank you, Shift B.
What is the hat from John Black? He's got a little hair left.
It's like he has standards or something.
There you go. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all very much.
We appreciate you. Appreciate you.
Wesley's right in the face. He's embarrassed or something. Don't worry, Wesley, we'll take him out.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, sir.
Okay, we resume under whole business. Item A, final consideration and approval of ordinance number 2020-16 for a request to rezone and ordinance number 2020-17 for annexation of parcel number 53D079.003 at 41121 Highway 515 South to C2 into the city of Jasper. And I'll ask Brandon Douglas, our city manager, to bring this to us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council, public, as well as the Zoom participants. I'd like to take this moment just to once again echo the sentiments. Councilmember Chief said it's a pleasure to get to work for this organization. We'll recognize. For the matter of this business, you may recall the June 1st meeting, we had the first reading, if you will, or the first consideration, whereupon in the previous May planning and zoning meeting, they went through the public hearing. This was submitted to you all, whereupon y'all favorably approved to move forward with the final consideration at the next meeting, which is the second reading or the July 13th. For the record, this particular property is contiguous to city property, therefore it is a candidate for annexation. The rezoning that is being applied is a comparable land use from highway business from the county to a C2 in the city. The North Georgia Raiding is claiming and pretty much is just about receiving the final CO for their office and maintenance shop. And beyond that, Mr. Mayor, I'll entertain any questions if there are, but that's the synopsis.
Council, I'll entertain a motion at this time to consider this, and actually I think it's to approve this, a request to rezone and an ordinance for annexation.
I make a motion, we accept this as second reading and approve.
And do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Under item B, we have final consideration and approval of ordinance number 2020-18 for a text amendment to the Jasper ordinance, zoning ordinance, for the section of permitted conditional uses by districts to allow the use of a brewery in the central business district. And we'll let our city manager, Brandon Douglas, bring this to us.
Thank you, Mayor. For the council and for the public, this particular item was, the public hearing was conducted at the planning and zoning meeting May 26th, whereupon it was favorably recommended to move forward to the June 1st mayor and council meeting. You all had the first consideration, first reading, if you will, of amending our zoning ordinance to allow for breweries to be located as a permitted use in the central business district. As you may recall, there had been a desire to recruit a brewery into the city, and I think in the midst of creating the ordinance and to assigning a particular land use, it was an oversight as there already is a permitted use in C2 and M1. This measure would merely allow for these zoning ordinance to reflect the central business district as permitting breweries. There's not a specific request other than this is a staff driven to allow for when a business would like to locate, it would be a permitted use. So this before you is the second reading or final consideration of said amendment to the zoning ordinance.
Council, I entertain a motion that we approve the second reading of this ordinance. Well, then, take the moment.
Subway.
But not need a second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Opposed, same.
The motion carries. Under item C, final consideration and approval of ordinance number 2020-19 for the purchasing policy for the city of Jasper. And we'll also let our city manager, Brandon, bring that to us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council, and for the public. I should have put Lindsay's name on here. I failed to do that. So if you have any real tough questions, please ask her. If you don't have any questions, just forget I made that omission. Nonetheless, you may recall, we had worked with the administration committee to be in compliance and accordance with our city charter under Article 6, Section 6.26 of Section A, to work on developing a purchasing policy. It was a pretty good comprehensive effort from council members Looney and Snady, as well as with some staff driven by Lindsay. Would like to just commend them for their work and just to remind council that with anything dealing with policy or the ongoing workings of operations, we will continually review this from time to time to make sure that it does not get stale and that it does continue to provide us with efficiencies in how we do business. But beyond that, I will defer, in all sincerity, any questions to Lindsay as she'd be more inclined to speak on specifics, if there are any.
Council, I entertain a motion to approve this purchasing policy for the city of Jasper.
I make a motion, we approve the purchasing policy as presented.
And I would take a second.
A second.
Thank you. And let's have any discussion or any questions for Lindsay at this time? If not, all in favor...
Good job, Lindsey.
Thank you.
I think they're just happy, Lindsay. All in favor, please say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We now have a purchasing policy for the city of Jasper. Under item D, consideration and approval of legal services agreement with bond counsel and city attorney for the water pollution control plan through the USDA financing and bonds. And we're going to let our city manager and our city attorney bring this to us. David?
Thank you, Mayor. Y'all have approved my form contract, but evidently USDA has hot-wired my form contract. So I rewrote using their form contract and ran it by our loan specialist at USDA, and she accepted this contract, but I need for the council to approve this legal services contract and in dealing with the financing and the bond issuance for the wastewater treatment plan expansion and improvements. And under this contract, you're marrying both me and bond counsel to be sure that we meet the USDA requirements, and so we just need a motion to approve the contract.
Council, I entertain a motion to approve the legal services contract with bond counsel. Subway. And a second, please.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Opposed, same.
The motion carries. Under item C, final consideration and approval of ordinance number 2020-19 for the purchasing policy for the city of Jasper. And we'll also let our city manager, Brandon, bring that to us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council, and for the public. I should have put Lindsay's name on here. I failed to do that. So if you have any real tough questions, please ask her. If you don't have any questions, just forget I made that omission. Nonetheless, you may recall, we had worked with the administration committee to be in compliance and accordance with our city charter under Article 6, Section 6.26 of Section A, to work on developing a purchasing policy. It was a pretty good comprehensive effort from council members Looney and Snady, as well as with some staff driven by Lindsay. Would like to just commend them for their work and just to remind council that with anything dealing with policy or the ongoing workings of operations, we will continually review this from time to time to make sure that it does not get stale and that it does continue to provide us with efficiencies in how we do business. But beyond that, I will defer, in all sincerity, any questions to Lindsay as she'd be more inclined to speak on specifics, if there are any.
Council, I entertain a motion to approve this purchasing policy for the city of Jasper.
I make a motion, we approve the purchasing policy as presented.
And I would take a second.
A second.
Thank you. And let's have any discussion or any questions for Lindsay at this time? If not, all in favor...
Good job, Lindsey.
Thank you.
I think they're just happy, Lindsay. All in favor, please say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We now have a purchasing policy for the city of Jasper. Under item D, consideration and approval of legal services agreement with bond counsel and city attorney for the water pollution control plan through the USDA financing and bonds. And we're going to let our city manager and our city attorney bring this to us. David?
Thank you, Mayor. Y'all have approved my form contract, but evidently USDA has hot-wired my form contract. So I rewrote using their form contract and ran it by our loan specialist at USDA, and she accepted this contract, but I need for the council to approve this legal services contract and in dealing with the financing and the bond issuance for the wastewater treatment plan expansion and improvements. And under this contract, you're marrying both me and bond counsel to be sure that we meet the USDA requirements, and so we just need a motion to approve the contract.
Council, I entertain a motion to approve the legal services contract with bond counsel. Subway. And a second, please.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same.
Motion carries. And that is all of our whole business. Under due business, item A is consideration of ordinance number 2020 for a request to rezone and ordinance number 2020-21 for annexation of parcel J A 17012 and J A 17011 located at 274 and 250 Robin Road. And the request is for zoning to C2 and into the city of Jasper. It's really a lot of words to just do a simple, but we'll allow that. Mr. City Manager, could you please bring this to us?
Absolutely, and for the sake of time and for the general public, I will not read this verbatim. However, you do have in your packets a copy of the staff report as generated for the Planning and Zoning Commission. Whereupon, a public hearing was held on this particular item on June the 23rd. The applicant, Mr. David Bobo, had requested to annex two properties from the county. They are eligible for annexation as being contiguous to city property or to city limits. The two parcels are in the county. One is highway business. The other adjacent to it is rural residential. Because the city does not do split zoning, the applicant is proposing that should this measure go through, that he would combine the parcels. As such, there is the need to rezone to the city's comparable HB district, which would be the C2. Through the staff report, we did realize that it is a compatible land use with surrounding properties, albeit there are some residential areas, residential zone properties. So staff would be recommending that the applicant ensure that any fencing around the property is adequately shielded and buffered from the road and that they adhere to the C2 requirements of buffering. And because the applicant is at this moment merely asking to bring this into the city and to rezonate commercial to allow for equipment storage, which is a permitted land use in
If this request failed, he would still be along his same route for the outcome. It would not change this.
Correct. That it would be comparable land use in the city as he currently has now. If he were to withdraw before the second reading and final consideration, he would still be permitted to continue.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same, same? The motion carries. Under new business, item B, consideration and approval of resolution number 2020-04 for the 2020 mid-year budget amendment for the City of Jasper. And I can't think of anyone more qualified to bring this to us than our city manager who keeps talking about budgets. So Mr. Douglas, if you would, and be governed by Lindsey. Wiggins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council for the public, you may recall that each year the city has done a final amended budget prior to the adoption or the presentation of the annual audit. We amended the 2019 budget in May of this past year. And the audit was presented to you all in June, June 1st. Staff have recognized that not just in light of COVID-19 and the pandemic, but just as a practice moving forward, it is advisable to go ahead and look at your revenues and expenditures mid-year, about six months into your fiscal year. We run on a January 1 to December 31 budget during the calendar. So we have presented to you all during a work session some specifics about the proposed budget amendment. These are estimates that you, we are estimating an approximate $180,000 reduction in revenue. There are some expenditures that are already encumbered that would necessitate us using about 29% or 28.8% of our fund balance to balance the proposed 2020 budget. Obviously, that number would be adjusted should revenues come in at higher than projected estimates. So once again, it still is more or less a final amended budget would be required. So this would not be the last or hearing of the 2020 budget. But it's just a good measure to kind of adjust and reduce down some revenues, reduce down some expenditures, and see how the remainder of the six months go. And by way of approving, you have a resolution in your packet just as a matter of operations of how you approve it.
So council, I need a motion to approve the mid-year budget amendments as presented for our resolution number 2020-04.
So moved.
And I have a motion and a second, please.
Second.
And is there any further discussion on this or any questions for Lindsey on this at all? I think we've all covered this in quite some detail. If not, all in favor, please say aye and raise your hands.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same? Motion carries. Item C, consideration and approval of resolution number 2020-05 for the amending of boundaries for the downtown development authority district. And we will ask our city attorney, Mr. David Siphon, to bring this to us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As the council recall, the city manager has initiated an initiative to look at refinancing of the water and sewer enterprise fund debt. And because right now, interest rates are at a great place for refinancing. And sort of like when you refinance your mortgage on your house, if you get a lower interest rate, then you can lower either your monthly payments or get back some principal depending on how you do the refinancing. So what we've discussed is being able to refinance almost $3 million in water and sewer enterprise fund debt at a lower interest rate. And that would allow the city to recover about $600,000 or more in capital funds that we can then use for capital improvements. So it's a great initiative. Basically, our payments won't change, the interest rate drops down, and we get needed money to do capital improvements on the water and sewer enterprise fund. As part of that, we'll have to issue new bond debt. And the way we do that is by way of an intergovernmental agreement with the downtown development authority. Some of the debt that we are refinancing is where water tanks are located and other water improvements. And they are beyond the traditional downtown area. So in order to be able to enter into this intergovernmental agreement with the downtown development authority, we need to expand the area of the downtown development authority to basically be the entire city boundaries. And so that's what this resolution does. It expands the area where the downtown development authority can act and enter into intergovernmental agreements and other types of low-interest loans to do economic development to encompass the entire city. And that will allow us to achieve our refinancing of the current debt. And that's the purpose behind this resolution. So the resolution basically expands the area of the downtown development authority to be the entire city. And I'll be glad to answer any questions that council has.
Council, I entertain a motion to approve this resolution for extending the boundaries of the downtown development authority to encompass our entire city.
So moved.
And I have a motion to approve and I have a second. Is there any discussion or any questions for our city attorney at this time?
Is this the only reading of this?
I beg your pardon?
It is. We can do it by resolution. It doesn't have to be an ordinance.
Okay. Does it, that takes a second reading? Good.
Resolution. Any further questions, discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, same? The motion carries. Under item D, consideration and approval of service agreements with ETC for services provided to the City of Jasper. I will make one comment about this, and that is that this will allow us to recoup a lot of the cost of those services over the course of a year's time. So it really will enable us to be a partnership with ETC. And I would ask our city manager, Brandon Douglas, to bring this forward to us.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, council for the public, the city is engaged in services with ETC to allow them to help us with professional services. In addition to that, they are the provider of our internet, telephone, and cable. We do realize a significant discount by way of being a government entity if we enter into a service agreement whereby we commit to a multi-year agreement to continue using ETC services. I do not know if this had been brought before you all in the past. However, this was a measure that had been, I guess, caught up in the transition. So you'll see that the expiration was at the end of 2019. And we are in July. They have continued to honor those discounts. Once Lindsey brought to my attention, it was too late to get on to June. So it's before you all now for consideration. I would recommend that we continue to partner with them. But with that, I have nothing else.
Council, I entertain a motion to approve the service agreement with ETC.
So moved.
And a second, please.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion, any questions? All in favor, please say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
And opposed, same? The motion carries. Item B, consideration and approval of advertising for bids for the creation of sidewalks and existing sidewalk repair list along with the solicitation of professional engineering services. And we're going to start this off by asking our city manager, Brandon, to tell us a little about this, and then we'll go to others.
Yes, sir. Just for background, and I apologize, I should have put on there the committee with council members Faust and Snady, who I would lean on for any sort of additional comments. I did put staff on here, but more or less what the impetus of this was the 2014 SPOS did allocate funds for sidewalk improvements consisting of creation and repairs. We are nearing the point where we have already done the last paving contract this past fall. So the monies that we have banked from the 2014 SPOS, which was collected up until June 30, and we do have a very considerable amount of time thereafter to dispense or expend the monies. In working with Adam and Lonnie and with the committee, we've put for y'all a preliminary list of sidewalk repairs and new. For full disclosure, I don't think that we all have solicited bids in the past for this big of a project on sidewalks. We have on paving. So what our intentions would be tonight is to seek direction from the elected body, that the list before y'all is not an end-all, be-all, but it's a jumping-off start, even to add some or delete some if need be. Lonnie and his team can put together a contract mirroring that of the paving. We can solicit bids from contractors to get some sort of idea of what the cost would be. Then that will enable us to look at if 20,000 or 30,000 linear feet yield a bid amount of X, it would give us insight into the next contract, 10, 15, 20, et cetera, until we've exhausted those funds. So I'll refer to the committee if they want to make any specifics about the list before y'all or Mr. Mayor.
I'll refer to the committee and then hold up, hold up on a spot for discussion, if I might.
Okay, well, basically Lonnie, you want to, you can say a little bit better maybe about far as the redoing of the older sidewalks that we need to replace, the discussion of new sidewalks on the north side of town, and basically getting everything back at level and in good repair.
Yes, Adam and I have went out and looked at the entire city area downtown on each corner. And we do have some sidewalks that are very narrow, and they need to be widened according to DOT standards. And handicap standards, these sidewalks need to be at least five foot wide. And just move forward with approving what we have and repairing. There are some places we need to do extensions, but we would also have to acquire easements and right-of-way from different entities such as railroad company in different areas. So, you know, it's a great project. We've been looking forward to this ever since we started paving. And so I believe it's a great thing for the city.
Well, for those of us who walk them, and I do so quite frequently, I think it'd be a great project for our citizens, too. And I don't know if this is the right time to bring this up for discussion, but we're looking at our Peace Park down there. And I had a conversation with Dan Who, who is on the board of directors for the old county jail. And he had asked me to meet and talk about some way of maybe coordinating what we're going to be doing down at the new park so that it kind of flows down for where the old jail is. And then there's some repairs, I think, on the wall to the old jail. Lonnie can, I think you probably know about this in the past, that there's some walls that are leaning there that look like they need to be addressed. And then that's all Georgia marble, I understand. It's that walkway down there is, if there's any way that we might be able to think about pulling that marble thing all the way around our park down there. So with that being said, I don't know if this is the right forward for that or...
That is something we can advise. Obviously, we have begun the Phase One, as we had talked about last year, with improvements to Peace Park. For those of you who refer to it as the rock area at the intersection of Mark Woodfield Main, we do have on this list, and I'll read before we move forward, but we do have Mark Woodfield as needing repairs to wow, adding and repairing. So the idea was, as we began this phased approach to improving that whole corner from the 125 North Main parking area, the old drive-through bank building, incorporating the elements of the old jail, the cabin, the little platform area, and then the green space. We do want to solicit some input from qualified individuals, how that can all tie together, even with the Oldwood Bridge. So the shorter answer is, yes, we will be doing immediate improvements to the sidewalk as it relates to walls and other things. At least from the staff perspective and talking with a few of the elected, we want to make sure that the Phase Two, which has been the additional elements of tying it all together, is accomplished. I think the goal has always been to enhance the curb appeal, incorporate any sort of elements of gateway signage. But I do want to defer to Ms. Anne or Mr. Faust in terms of any specifics. We have talked about that particular area. And it is a component of the sidewalk. But if they want to talk about that or if they want to defer to the end of the mayor, their committee reports, they may want to talk about it again. And you want to address it?
Yeah, I think we're moving in the right direction. I do think there's a lot of that we're, you know, going to have to replace, widen, some new ones. Heard a lot of good things. People are excited about the sidewalks. So I think we're headed in the right direction. And I think we've got a good start on what we need to do.
Especially when it comes to repairing the uneven and the damaged sidewalks that we've got now. We have a good meaning, we have a good walking community and a good running community. We want to be able to enjoy the sidewalks as much as possible.
And if I may add, just while we're still on it, if you have any specific questions, Adam and his crew did a phenomenal job in the removal. There are some pretty tough remaining concrete foundations, if you will. We did want to hold off on that just to kind of solicit the input and just to present the information that this is a continual effort of our plan of doing a phased approach, an incremental approach of enhancing the area. We may need to solicit some professional help to break that remaining foundational pieces up. We may need to solicit some professional help to break that remaining foundational pieces up. We do know that that may compromise some of that last or that forward brick wall before you get to the second and third terrace. But if it pleases y'all, we will continue to do those measures because the idea was to present a most level area with some, maybe some dirt and then some grass or sod as we continue to look at integrating all the pieces together. I think Adam could perhaps rent some stuff, but if y'all have any questions about his efforts last week or even moving forward, he is here to entertain anything about the sidewalks or that.
So if I hear you correctly, Mr. Douglas, we are taking a phased approach to the park. The final outcome is yet to be determined because we're going to be consulting with professionals in that field to make sure whatever we come up with at the end is comprehensive and works well with downtown.
Yes, sir. I think I think the approach that we had talked about, at least since my arrival, as it related to this and other important crucial pieces of our our community, was to take an approach whereupon we will consult with qualified individuals like the landscape architect, whereupon then we could reach out to some of our landscape partners in the community to say, here is a concept that has kind of been objectively reviewed with key stakeholders such as Mr. Poole and others. They do a concept, and then what you do is you get qualified landscapers, if you will, to then comment on those concepts of how to bring it to reality in terms of a construction project. So the phased incremental approach is, yes, we began this journey with identifying measures that had to be put in place. That was the first one. The second one is to integrate all the pieces. Now that the parking lot is completed, the rocks are removed, how does all of it tie together? And then the implementation phase, the third phase, they're out.
Perfect. Safe and functional.
Okay, and one quick.
Can I add one thing? I want to commend Adam and his crew for the job that they did down there. They did a great job, you know, and utilizing safety and keeping it all going. I just want to thank him and his crew and everybody that was involved there.
Absolutely.
Agreed. Thank you.
Brandon, just thought to brought out a question. Do we have a list of the actual sidewalks that we're talking about on the bottom of that information?
Yes, sir. In the packet, and I'll read that for you all.
It's on back of the page, Sonny. Which which communication? I don't have a packet. The one for the 2014 SPOS monies, give a page for their.
Right after the ETC agreement.
For what agreement, I got?
ETC agreement.
And and Dr. Proctor and for the public, if I could, I did want to read at least the list that was generated for the good of the order, if I may.
Sure.
Thanks, sir.
The the project, in no specific order, we're looking at Burnt Mountain Road, beginning at the railroad, ending at Landrum Circle to replace at approximately 2378 feet. Burnt Mountain Road, beginning at Walgreens to Cove Road, this would be new at 2310. Mary Street, beginning at Stagall, ending Highway 53 to replace approximately 528 feet. North Main Street, from Woodbridge to Hood Road, new, approximately 2,106 feet. South Main Street, Mineral Springs Road to Fairfield Apartment, replace and new of approximately 2702. West Church Street, from Mark Woodfield to Maple, replace and new, approximately 2596. East Church Street, from Tractor Supply to Southscape, replace new, 2502. East Church Street, on the other side, Walgreen to Old Take Road, replace and new, 3100 feet. And then Arbor Hills repairs throughout the subdivision, Mark Woodfield Street, anything that we did not capture throughout repairs. Prelimarily, we are looking at about 18,222 linear feet at approximately five foot wide with just very rough estimates of $3 a square foot. That would yield $275,000. Obviously, if you all are comfortable with us moving forward in this direction, that number is just merely a jumping-off point. If, in fact, bids came in very favorably, we do have a robust fund balance in the SPOS whereupon we could possibly do another one or two as we have the funds of approximately $700,000. So if this project list were to go off the bid, we do need to solicit professional engineers on some identified projects. That is a cost worth doing for some survey work and for to make sure utility locates. But overall, I think this list, if y'all wanted to add something in the immediate, we could put more on here, put it out for bid and have some add-bid items and some deductions that we could then say, well, that could be a phase two or phase three. So if there is direction received favorably to move forward and throughout between now and the September meeting, because I think we're too close to the August 3rd scheduled meeting for us to conceivably get something put together bid packet. At the September meeting, we would essentially have maybe something ready for you all to consider as far as a bid price. So I hope that helps, Dr. Proctor and others.
Do I have any questions? I would like to ask for a motion to proceed to get a bid.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve advertising for bids for this preliminary work on our sidewalks. Do we have any further discussion?
The one thing, counsel, if I might, we discussed a while back, I believe the first of the year, connecting with the county on the park, the city park across from the board of elections. They do have an existing sidewalk over there. If there was a project, this could be the phase two portion, to make an official lift and sign crosswalk there with sidewalks on our side of the street for safety for our community members that use the parks. I would certainly like for that to be included in the project list.
I see no problem with adding there. There's funds available, and adding it on the list does guarantee that we get all of this done. Let's get a question.
So are we implementing this? Is that what you want to do?
Which is to add to the list?
Yeah, it's just add to the list.
Add it to the list.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion and a second with with an adding to the list. And do we have any further discussion? Oh, wait, I have something.
Do we need to, Brandon, do you need anything else from us to to move forward in what the staff needs to do?
I'm good, Ms. Ann. I think the mayor had a question.
Well, you were talking about using Adam and some equipment that we might have to rent to break up that concrete down at the that's remaining at the Peace Park. Is that something that you might consider? I mean, I know that we've taken Adam off of his ordinary duties for quite some time. Is that something we might need to farm out? And it's my question.
That that is something that in looking at, now that you all want to move forward with the sidewalk, if, in fact, we run across the fact that some of this may be best done from economies of scale just to have that operation or that outfit, just to mobilize one time when they're doing demo, to come in and do it. So, yes, sir, that's that's something, unless they can do it relatively easy and inexpensively, then I would recommend to you all that we've incorporated it into the bid list.
I wanted to bring that out because I know that we have a lot that Adam has to do coming up there soon. We do keep him busy, and he is great at it. So, you know, if we can have him done anyway, thank you for that. And so now I think I stand at the point where I have a motion and a second, and I need any further discussion from anyone? All in favor, please say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Opposed, same. The motion carries for soliciting bids. Item F, consideration and approval of the purchase and installation of concrete barriers along the S codes, along Cove Road, in addition to the creation of streetlights along this throughfare for the safety of motorists. And Brandon, I think that you have Lonnie Waters to bring this to us?
Well, Mayor and counsel, you remember back about a year and a half ago, we had a rock slide on Cove Road.
It was Brandon's fault.
And the concrete barriers that were up there saved the city a lot of work. It helped the situation drastically. So talking with Brandon, we pursued getting with the DOT. There was a LEMID grant. We applied for it and have been following through that ever since the rock slide. So the DOT has actually sent the city a check for $19,000. The city will have to do a 30% match, and that can be in labor any kind or like that. But I have been up there day and night at different times watching the traffic. We've also decided that it would make the road much safer and for our employees, when they're up there at night, when it's icing over, at least they could see, there's four spiral poles there. This is Georgia Power's district. I have met with Mr. Isabel from Georgia Power. He had went up there and looked at it. They can put a streetlight on all four poles, light up that entire side of the mountain. And we can use it with regular LED streetlights. They said that they would probably need about four hours one day at one lane traffic. They would ask for the city police department or city staff to help direct traffic. And we can move forward to this. I have already contacted three different companies. We can get the concrete barriers according to size. The smaller ones start at $25 apiece, and the larger ones are $45 apiece. DOT requires the larger ones, or they don't require it, they suggest. Because with rocks falling or whatever happens, they are like twice as heavy. The smaller ones are 2,000 pounds, the larger ones are 4,000, 4,500 pounds. So they will withstand the pressure of dirt and stuff coming into the roads. We're trying to make this safer, not only for our employees, but also for the travelers coming in and out of town. And while we're on the subject of the lighting, received an email from Georgia Power. They also are needing an easement on two tracks land that belonged to the city and two tracks land that belongs to the DDA. And we would like to forward those easements over to the attorney and let him look at them and move forward with working with them on their underground project as far as electricity. So that's about all I have on that topic, unless you have questions.
Thank you. And Mr. City Manager, do we need to include the those easements in this?
Not right now, so we would bring those to y'all at the August 3rd meeting. Just wanted to bring y'all's attention that we're continuing to partner and work with our local utility, all of local utilities. And the only thing I would just like to reiterate and add is I commend you all for continuing to enable us to pursue ways and identify ways of trying to make not just our citizens, but the whole community safer by adding these. This is not something that would most likely exceed the purchasing policy of my authorities, so to speak. But I think it's important to demonstrate this body directing us to continually evaluate where we can and when we can putting safety measures in place.
Counsel, at this point, I'd ask for a motion to approve the purchase and installation of the barriers and the light.
Certainly.
And a second, please.
Second.
And any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye and raise your hand. Opposed, same. Motion carries. Item G, consideration and approval of Tyler Technologies for the purchasing of software at a cost not to exceed $100,000. And for the mayor to execute necessary documents associated with the purchase and installation in accordance with final review and approval of agreement language by city manager or city attorney. And Mr. City Manager, I will let you bring this to us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, counsel, and for the public. You will take note that I specifically did not omit Lindsey Williams on this particular item. I wanted to make sure that she's given credit, full credit for working with the committee of Councilmembers Snady and Looney in addition to kind of some sidebar technical expertise from Mayor Lawrence and from Councilmember Raffield. In your packet is a comparison of three vendors. Tyler Technologies did come in in terms of the base at a more, a less expensive option, which did fall below $100,000. Lindsey has continued to consult with them to ensure that basically all the buy-down features we can for reducing travel, which is essentially non-existent now with Tyler to us, everything would be either remote or virtual training at this point in time. It was not the lowest, as we do have an existing relationship with Harris Technologies. You may recall that currently our technology is, for those folks who remember the old mainframe computer system where you hit the space bar, the enter key, it's the green screen. We are continuing to operate our business with that older technology. It inhibits our ability to function and even more in light of the need with this pandemic to do things that more modern technologies we take for granted, where you scan and go, where you do virtual purchasing or payments. We do not have that capability, not just on this particular instance. But I think moving forward, there is a sense of normalcy and expectation from not just our community, our residents, our essentially our customers, as we have enterprise funds. We do have, I think, an obligation to provide them with newer and better options as it relates to contactless payments and visits. During this pandemic, we have been relegated to having persons utilize the Dropbox. We incurred some expense, absorbed some expense where there was pay by telephone. But nonetheless, this would bring us into the more 21st century of doing business at both our enterprise funds and governmental. So with that, I don't know if there's any specifics. I did not demo any of this. I will tell you that the employees at City Hall did have several demos, so it was not just price-related. We looked at the user. was not just price related. We looked at the user ability, the different modules that you can create in the future. So this would allow us to try a different module for development per needs in the future. So as we continue to build on this, in relation to COVID-19, we will be trying to recoup some of these funds for any CARES money, in light of the fact that as we have these mandates of working remotely, this will allow us to remotely work with laptops to employees so that we can continue to provide the essential services to our constituents. So with that, got any questions, specifics, operational? We'll defer to Lindsey. Or the committee for their input.
Counsel, at this point...
Well, Lindsey did, Lindsey did a great job in getting all the paperwork and programs together for us to look at. So she really makes the committee's job easy, and she did all the legwork for it. So we really do appreciate her hard work on that.
I agree, and I'd like to make a motion. We approve this purchase.
Same.
Counsel, I have a motion and a second to approve the purchase. Do we have any further discussion?
The, to comment, I'll, may I, the, the modern technology is going to allow our city to move forward like it should. The fact that we are still on the system we're currently on is quite honestly sad. I'm glad that we're moving forward for our staff's sake. This is a way of us showing our community that we're moving forward. It's also a big way to show our staff that we support them and we appreciate. We're going to invest in this because what it's going to do, it's going to allow us better communication with not only our staff, but our community, and it's going to allow engagement. Our community can be engaged with future modules that we've discussed in ways that Jasper has never thought about. And as we move forward, those things are crucial to, to our city and where we're headed.
Yes, absolutely.
Well said. Any further discussion on the motion and the second? If not, all in favor, please say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Opposed? Same? The motion carries. And Lindsey is happy.
We're all happy.
We're all happy.
We're all happy.
We get that, Lindsey. Thank you.
Item J, consideration and approval of purchase of up to five workstations for the administration department for City Hall at a cost not to exceed, or excuse me, C-12,500. And I will make one comment on this, and that is that, that some of these stations are still running on technology that should have been upgraded many, many years ago. We need to get this so that we can actually run some good programs.
Tyler. Oh, we can't run Tyler off of the map.
Right. So, Counsel, I approve, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Same.
And a second, please.
Same.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye and raise your hands.
Aye.
Opposed? Same? Motion carries. Item I, consideration and approval of Harris TBS providing the city with financial iteration of the property tax digest, along with the printing and mailing of property taxes at a cost not to exceed $3,500. So we're going to let Lindsey bring this to us. If you will, please, Lindsey.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Currently, we use Harris to do our property taxes. We get our digest from the county, and then we use them. They actually print and mail and handle everything with our taxes. And we're just asking for approval to, to keep that up for this year.
I make a motion that we approve of Harris to continue...
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Same.
Aye.
Motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? Same? Motion carries. Item J, consideration and approval of City Hall and the lobby, et cetera, alterations in response to needed safety improvements. And Brad, will we let you bring this to us, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, counsel. This may be something that is perhaps a little new or foreign to the elected body, in so much that I have not really beat this horse to death just yet. But there is a need and desire that has been illustrated through the onset of the pandemic to make some modifications to our City Hall lobby, to provide some separation for our administrative side, as well as during court days, we've got some areas that can only be accessed with persons with limited mobility. So what I'm asking, and I apologize if I did not illustrate in the agenda item, is approval up to $10,000 to go towards probably about $6,500 towards modifications to the lobby, which would mirror the ward department customer service of a knee-high wall just on the administrative side with plexiglass so that as you enter into the lobby, you have a little bit of separation from the public with city staff, so that in the event, we don't always have to just shut down, unless we are in compliance with an executive order, we can continue to operate safely in providing social distancing and some contactless payments. Additionally, looking at some improvements of accessibility, whether it's a handicap ramp right outside the chambers. If logistically it can work, we want to identify that as an option. Not sure how quickly we can get it done. We are optimistic that these monies hopefully could be reimbursed through the CARES Act that local governments in Georgia are receiving. We are not yet fully understanding of the regulations nor the specific timeframe and parameters when we would get those monies. But I think it's better to get ahead of it by seeking your authorization to move forward, get it done. It is something similar to the technology that I think is best for the safety of our residents and customers and employees. So I ask for your favorable consideration.
Counsel, I consider a motion to approve this.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve up to $15,000 for this request. I do understand the staff is asking for 10. In my opinion, this is, this is well needed, and I do not want to spare the expense.
I second that. I mean, I think for safety and, and all the reasons that Brandon just gave, that we need to move forward.
Have a motion and a second to approve up to $15,000 as needed for alterations in our lobby. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Opposed? Same? Motion carries. Item K, is consideration of advertising for alcohol license for Pendle Creek Brewing Company to be located at 57 North Main Street. And is this our first reading of this, or just approval of the license itself?
This, Mr. Mayor and Council, is, once again, we have that, I'm going to call it archaic way of seeking permission to advertise. So what I hope is you all would authorize that. We do look to try to amend that way of doing business, but for this, it's just to give us authorization.
So, Counsel, I entertain a motion to approve.
Same.
And a second.
Same.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same? Motion carries. Now, do we need an executive session? Counsel, I entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Same.
Have a motion to enter into executive session.
Section.
We have a second.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Raise your hand. Opposed? Same?
And, Mr. Mayor, counsel, and for the public, similarly to what we have done with all Zoom participants, even though we're having the hybrid approach, we are asking for the staff in the room to leave. We will be muting and turning the camera off. We ask the council mute and turn their camera off. I will be teleconference in the three elected. Once we're done, then we'll invite folks back on and resume Zoom.
Counsel, I entertain a motion to come out of executive session.
Same.
And a second.
Same.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are now back on our regular session. Item nine, committee reports. The Development Committee, that will be council members Dr. Stunney Proctor and Kirk Raffield.
Committee continues to meet with Clark Patterson, Lenny, and our other members of our committee to work through our planning and zoning. I think that's the main gist of what I would comment on now. We've been through quite a bit. I think we're getting fairly close to starting letting the review process expand maybe a little bit beyond the committee. That's it. I mean...
The Street and Parks Committee, that would be council members Ann Snady and John Faust.
Well, I hope everybody got to see the new playground equipment. We'd like to thank Mike Carey Pool and Southeast Outdoor Solutions for building one of the finest playgrounds we've seen in a while. We had a pretty good turnout with ribbon cutting. It was really nice. And every time I've been by there, it's been covered up. So it looks like it's getting to use.
Yeah.
It is. And you have anything you want to add?
No, nothing at this point.
And also to let you know that the Southeast Outdoor Solutions is a Jasper business. We spend our money at home. So let's spend local, guys.
Administration Committee would be council members Jim Looney and Ann Snady.
I think we have been diligent working through our list. We've still got some job descriptions that I hope we can present at the next meeting. I think other than that, we're going to be looking for some, some new work before too long.
I agree.
Thank you. Water, wastewater, council members John Faust and Dr. Proctor.
So we've been working over the last month since our last meeting, working building relationships with our neighbors. And if you recall, I asked for them to start solidifying the documentation for the relationships we have with various local providers and so forth and so on. We continue to kind of do that. So no, nothing else other than that, I think.
Yeah, the water problem, David, all of those people are just doing a wonderful job. We appreciate all the work they're doing. They're really working hard.
Great deal. Police and Fire Committee, council members Kirk Raffield and his young lady.
Kirk, you did a wonderful job recognizing our firefighters today. I appreciate that. Public safety folks, this is a time when they're, it's, it's a strange time for many of them. And I appreciate everything they do, and all of our doing a fine job for the city.
We do.
We've had activity in downtown, a few events that have been organized. And it's worth noting that our public safety has responded very well. They have planned and executed plans properly. Very proud of them. And as Jim mentioned, these, these times are challenging and unnerving, but it's important to know that we support our public safety.
Item F, big financial report, Brandon Douglas. What's the state of our finances?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, counsel, for the public, we've continued to remain diligent in attempting to balance our revenues and expenditures. Ever in your report, you will notice a revenues under expenditures by nearly $25,000. Part of the amending of the budget is obviously to utilize a portion of fund balance as needed to cover any shortfalls in revenues. As illustrated, at the time of this report generated, revenues were under expenditures of 2.197817 versus expenditures, which is predominantly, we're talking about the general fund, salary benefits, and just basic operations without any capital expenditures, 2.222207. So once again, revenue is under 24,389. Loss receipts are up, 138,332. The TAVT, as compared to this time last year, is obviously $9,000 plus dollars below. You may recall that the legislature did adjust the TAVT effective July 1 of this year. We do, don't know yet what implications that will be, albeit it will be positive in nature. We just don't know the dollar amount. As you will recall, last July, Lindsey brought before me and this board kind of a halting of the brakes. We were looking at 200-plus thousand shortfall last year, and that would translate into this year. So we're going to be interested to see how the TAVT stacks up for six months. Building Department, albeit the pandemic and the, the other challenges, they did garner nearly 11,000 permits. They are doing as best they can do to continue allowing operations to continue in the community. The Water Fund, Watersure Fund, there is a healthy revenues over expenditures as illustrated in your packet. We are maintaining that persons are being responsible and paying their, their bills. So we do appreciate our customers. We will continue to provide the services. There are the checks written over $5,000 in your packet, as well as the SPOSS 2014. We have not yet generated the SPOSS 2020 because that just began July 1. We most likely will not realize those funds until the August, mid-August. So hopefully by your September meeting, we'll have some idea as to what that first month will yield us. And that is all.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
And Development Report, Lonnie, if you would bring that to us.
The Mayor and Council, the Planting, Soliding, and Building Department, as Brandon commented, we sold last month around $11,000 worth permits. We've done 23 building inspections, nine soil erosion inspections, 10 animal control calls, and we've had several inquiries about properties, annexations, rezonings, possible buildings in the future. Nobody has disclosed what they're talking about at this time, but things are looking positive for the future. And also, I'd like to bring the council's attention that due to the virus and the precautions everybody's taken, the Chamber Commerce usually has a truck raffle, and we cannot have that live like we have over the years. So this year, it will be televised on ATC. And people, their tickets still include their meals. And I'm asking for permission from the council tonight to allow us to close veterans, memorial... from the Council tonight to allow us to close Veterans Memorial Drive there at the Chamber for three hours on the date of August the 8th, so that we can have like a drive-through and have our food set up. And the people that brought tickets to the truck raffle can, from 3:30, well, from 4 to 6, but we need about 30 minutes to get everything open back up. So from 3:30 till 6:30, we're asking to close that and also use at least one lane of Steedaw. There are about three or four residents on that street that could possibly use it that night, and it is a one-way street. That way, we can get all the traffic off of 53 and West Turk Street and use Steedaw as an inlet to the Veterans Memorial. And we can, the Chamber can carry out, distribute in probably 600 meals, and then everybody can go home and watch the truck drawing on TV and see who wins that night. So I would like Council permission to close that for three hours on August the 8th.
Counselor, has been a motion to grant closing that for the Chamber.
I'd like to make a motion. We approve the closure request from noon until 8:00 p.m. to be used in Mr. Waters' discretion. Just a second.
Seven, are they going to a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Please say aye. Opposed? Same. You have your commission. And now, the police reports and the fire report are both listed in our, do you want to go through those, Brandon?
Not unless the pleasure of the council that's in your back.
Any questions on those two?
No, I'm reading Kirk Lowell's questions.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. However, the last one is the City Manager's comments and report. And I really want to hear this. So could you bring this to us, Mr. City Manager?
Absolutely. Mayor and Council, for the public, I appreciate the chance to be added. Although you're probably tired of hearing me thus far, if you would just entertain me for a few more moments, I'd like to use the chance to kind of start kind of a mid-year report of accomplishments. In terms of a traditional year, albeit this is anything but a typical year in local government, I want to applaud y'all as a collective elected body, and I want to illustrate to the public and for our staff to, all the hard work has not been done in vain. We made a concerted choice to continue operating at an efficient and high level to get stuff done. The memo before you, I'd like to read out some bullet points that in the first six months of 2020, the collective efforts of the elected body, city staff, including our city attorney, as well as the community as a whole, our partners at the Chamber and other key stakeholders in downtown and business owners, working together has demonstrated what it means to be a team. And part of what I try to stress is that the team is that together, everyone achieves more. This is not about me or one or two individuals. This is the collective efforts of all persons. You all beginning in January with the kind of the segue into the new administration, had an annual physician's appointment, get some persons appointed for planning and zoning and DDA, have them taken oath of office, which is commendable, retaining soliciting a city attorney, intergovernmental agreement with the county and the Chamber for economic development. There's never been a more crucial time to continue as a community out there trying to solicit, even if there's not an immediate return on that investment, it will pay dividends. The communities that are continuing to push out their market, if you will, are the ones that will continue to thrive. Amending the ordinance to charter, to allow for the reading of ordinances not to be literal, what that means is having 22-plus ordinances, which is how we function and operate. So it's not something that's just procedural in nature. It's how we do business more efficiently. Organizationally, create a chart, help with a hierarchy, bring in some organizational leaderships, job descriptions, the zoning ordinance reworked, successfully amending the 2019 budget by creating an accountability or employee evaluation form. That is very good to let our constituents know that we are holding our employees to a standard through an evaluation process that will continue to be enhanced and tweaked over time. Approve the GFA deferrals to allow us to have a few months of respite of not having to pay those loans, even as we're continuing to work on trying to get some bond refunding. Hopefully, you'll have that in August. The purchasing policy as tonight, that is huge operationally, resolutions, five of which, I believe, approved and began Myrtle Street replacement. That's nearly about halfway done. I don't want to forget about even the Grand View project being completed as our obligation to the county. The Phase One at City Park, the playground, the continued leak detection, which I think there'll be a presence of a match point in the community pretty soon, if not already, the acquisition of the body armor to the police, the turnout gear, which having the foresight to continue to invest in your people's safety never goes unnoticed, and even more evident as tonight with the recognition of the firefighters. That turnout gear is a lifesaver. The moving forward of even giving authorization to get the surplus stuff out of here. We have not yet done it because there's been some restrictions, but we've gotten authorization. When we can get out there and get some of the surplus off, we're going to do it. Creation of additional downtown parking, the sheer fact of having the foresight to acquire property and then to create downtown parking is always, always good. Maintaining the Cove Creek Bypass dredging, creating the zoning district, the successful completion of the 2019 financial audit. The state gave deferrals to communities on certain things. We chose to keep working. So we've completed that and received the feedback from the state. So I applaud Lindsey and the team to get that done. The 2020 budget mid-year amendments, that's something tonight. The approval of the USDA loan and grant for the water pollution control plant expansion, that was done and accomplished. We're going to continue to work on that. You all, at the beginning of the year before the pandemic, made the decision to have a goal-setting retreat and to hold staff accountable to adhering to this schedule for our community. I applaud you all for giving us clear direction and guidance. Coming out of that, obviously, is the Peace Park improvements and continued phasing that, along with other incremental projects. And as we continue to take small steps, this is just six months in a pandemic that you all have allowed us to do. So with that, that concludes just a very brief synopsis. So I want to just again thank you all for allowing me the chance to speak and to come to work every day to get it done.
Right. And a new employee can interfere to us.
Yes.
Yes. That's the majority.
Good. For everyone who may recall, at the June 25th meeting, you all voted to hire Beverly Rattlin as the Finance Director slash City Clerk. She is here today. She was so excited that she wanted her first day to be on Monday, the 13th, with a council meeting. With that, I thank you all. And Beverly, if you'd like to just stand and say a few words, put her on the spot.
I'm not scared. I'm happy to be here. I'm excited for the opportunity to work with Brandon, to make changes that will benefit the community and the employees of the city. And just happy to be here.
Thank you.
Counselor, welcome.
And I'd like to just point out again, the team of, for two deputies, Lindsey and Tara, and I wanted to go unnoticed that they have been a lifeblood for me during the transition. And it's less about the new employee, it's just more about the team.
Thank you.
I think we need to commend Brandon and the entire staff for the city of Jasper and the phenomenal job that they've done.
Amen.
I agree with that totally. Thank you, Brandon. Thank you for your leadership.
One day, we'll have public tax. Let me hear this.
And Counselor, a motion to adjourn is always in order.